Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty-two A M. And begin with the land acknowledgement. I'd like to begin by acknowledging that Jasper National Park and the municipality of Jasper are on Treaty Six and Eight Territories, as well as Maytee Region Four. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route, and home for the Denai, Nahawatne, Anishinaabe, Sepwetnik, Stony Nakota, and Maytee. The municipality of Jasper acknowledges the land and these territories to honor the relationship indigenous people have had with this land, to remind us of our responsibility and obligations to this place and to indigenous peoples, and to affirm our accountability to address the ongoing impacts of colonization that continue to affect indigenous peoples. So ladies and gentlemen, and the public viewing in, we have councillor Kellher MP on Zoom and the five of us in the room. I would like to move on to asking if there are any additions to the agenda. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Firstly, I wonder whether I might add to your acknowledgement that today, August ninth, is also the International Day of the World's Indigenous Peoples, a day set aside to raise awareness and protect the rights of the world's indigenous peoples. Significant day and it's appropriate that we also acknowledge that that is happening today here and elsewhere in the world. Secondly, would it be appropriate that council take a moment to acknowledge the tragic event in Van last Friday? We might consider sending an announcement to council on behalf of our community to theirs. We're not going to agree from sort of their experience in that. I would suggest that in the absence of objection, we'd motion that. I think everybody would be in agreement, and so perhaps we can just undertake to that then after today's meeting. And finally, I do have a request to add a matter to today's agenda. I apologize for very late notice. I didn't realize until this morning that I failed in that previous intent to bring something forward to today. So if you have checked your emails, hopefully you received an email from me this morning. And if we could add, say, as new business, seven point four, a discussion about the federal electoral redistricting, a motion that I presented at that time. But it weren't some discussion, and again, I apologize for the late notice. But if we are inclined to make a presentation, we don't have another occasion to consider that because the deadline is August fifteenth. That doesn't mean we need to make a presentation. So submission and the deadline for that is much longer. And we have no other opportunity to consider a formal presentation. So I would ask for motion, or I would make a motion that the agenda be amended to include the issue item seven point four, which will be a special federal electoral boundary redistricting.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, I will call a vote. All those in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to item three, approval of the agenda. And three point one, Committee of the Whole Agenda. I would ask for a motion to approve the amended agenda to include item of seven point four. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to item four. Oh, great, thank you. Point of order. Thank you very much, Mayor Ireland. I'm looking for a motion then to approve the agenda. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, who made the motion, and just to reaffirm, all those in favor of the motion? Thank you. I would appear that we're going on to item four, Committee of the Whole Minutes. You have the minutes in front of you. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Seeing no business arising from the minutes, I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the Committee of the Whole. Councillor Hall? Any discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried. We are at agenda item five, Delegations. And we do have a presentation that will be on Zoom. And I would ask Jeanette Briggan to begin the presentation to council.
Thank you, Mayor Melnick. Well, our delegation is joining us. I'll just note that council was shared with correspondence from the Jasper Employment Education Centre was shared with council. I think you should have all received a hard copy at your stations today. Jeanette is here to speak to the to the correspondents in front of you. I see that she's come live on our Zoom screen, so I'll pass over to Jeanette.
Thank you. Good morning, mayor and council, and thank you for putting me on the agenda for last minute discussion or yeah. We received, we submitted our application for the community designation under the Rural Renewal Initiative that the mayor and council supported in May. We submitted at the beginning of July our full application, and they've come back to us just last week, late last week, asking for some information, further information on our application. And one of them was to identify the stakeholders that would sit, the decision-making body that would sit on this community designation, in this community designation role, to determine who would actually be at the table. And so one of the things that's important to realize is that this committee will be the committee that actually approves employers' applications to, A, become part of that community designation. And what this will provide to employers is the opportunity for, to apply for temporary foreign workers and bypass the federal process. With our endorsement, the committee's endorsement, they will not have to pay the thousand dollar fee for applications to the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme, nor will they have to do a national recruitment and proof of trying to recruit Canadians. It will basically be this deciding body that will actually endorse employers and their applications in moving forward. So it will be quite a cost savings potentially for employers. This decision-making body will develop terms of reference and will establish numbers of employers that will actually be approved on an annual basis. Once we're approved, we will have the responsibility of doing this for up to five years. So it's three years initially, once we're designated, with a two-year review at the back end. But we've included groups like the Chamber of Commerce will be on there, Settlement Services, the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme, people that will actually be working with workers from employers or maybe helping job workers in the community in any issues that they may be having with employers or need supports. We're also thinking about including a representative from the Newcomer Network. So as I was gathering the stakeholders that I felt would be important to fairly represent community as a whole, I did wonder about the municipality's role in this and whether council would would like to see either a councillor designated to this or someone from administration. And so basically, that is my question to you today. I'm being asked to return this information to them. I'm hoping to submit this by the end of today. While we don't need the name of the body, the person that he would designate to this, I did want to bring it to the council's attention to, for you to give me some guidance on how involved mayor and council would like to be, or do they see this more as administration would be involved? Or maybe neither. So that is my ask today. Some guidance on that.
Thank you, Mr. Maru. Are there questions from council?
I don't know if you want to know anymore about the time commitment.
Thank you. I was about to ask. I do see that you're currently anticipating that maybe you would meet two to four times a year. In addition to meeting, would there be additional time commitments over and above the meeting times?
No. So once the committee develops the terms of reference and opens up the application to employers, I've had to do a dead, like a timeline and deliverables for this project. So basically, we see approving five, up to five employers for the first year. But we will have to, the committee will have to develop a terms of reference that is going to guide us on how and why we will approve employers into the program. And then we will open up the application process. And so that'll have a timeline, let's say, three months. And then the committee will actually meet to review the applications and determine which employers will be accepted into the program. Now, the acceptance will be based on a variety of things, like we will have to look at if employers, we'll have to do a bit of research. And so from Jasper Employment and Education's perspective, we would look at things like, have they been reported in occupational health and safety, in W C P, in labor standards? And that's all information that's readily available. From the other committees' perspectives would be, what are we hearing in the committee, in the community that could impact the committee's decision to either approve or ask employers or dis- not accept employers into the program? And so I would see that, you know, the application process, yes, we'll meet probably once in November. We will hear back that we've been approved or not approved by the end of October in this next round. And so I would think by November, the committee is meeting, we're developing terms of reference and an application process. We're putting it out to the community. In January, we're probably meeting to review applications and approve. And then, once they're approved, while employers will need a letter of endorsement from the organizing body, we see that that once the committee has determined that these are the employers that, yes, we're going to approve and work with in the next year, we don't have to meet every time they bring us an application to be endorsed. Is the committee will have decided that these employers are the ones that we will approve? And then, gee, probably because we're kind of the main holder of this project, we'll then just write a letter of endorsement to the employer for their application. And then they submit that. So, you know, initially, I see, yes, we probably meet within the first year. I think to work out the kinks, I would see us meeting once every three months. But then I think once we're well established and we have guided timelines, I could see us just meeting twice a year. I think the benefit to council would be, or to the municipality, someone that's informed, would be, we learn a lot more about labor and about some of the issues they're being faced in the community. And, you know, the other thing I think there's a real opportunity for in this committee is if an employer is turned away because they have these reports on them that they're not, you know, they don't meet the standards that we've identified, it gives us an opportunity to work with that employer and to say, you know what, you don't qualify for this here, but this is what the committee would like to see over the next year. And if you can show and demonstrate to us that you've put some of these systems in place, or, you know, whatever those pieces are, then please come back to us, you know, and then we will reconsider kind of at the next intake. So there's lots of opportunities to actually improve, I think, labor relations in the community through this program.
I have councillor Hall. Who was your question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Maybe a question or maybe a question, I wonder, could we have a member of admin and council on this committee? I do see the benefit of having a councillor on there. It'd be very beneficial to know what's going on there, like market.
We could. I mean, again, as I'm identifying key stakeholders and sending them back today, I mean, the municipality has endorsed this program. I see them being actively involved. I'd, we'd have no problem with having two, you know, one from council and one from administration as well.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I will direct my question through you to this Marku, but it might be better directed to our own administration. So feel absolutely free, Jeanette, to deflect as necessary. I can agree that there would be benefit to council to be part of this committee. But I wonder where the better benefit lies to the committee in terms of membership. So you've listed, I think, five stakeholders, Chamber of Commerce, I understand, and that's not us, Jasper Employment and Education Centre, I understand, and that's not us. But Settlement Services, Newcomer Network, and Temporary Foreign Worker Programme. Who actually administers those? Who would be the representative? And through our community development department, do we not already have a degree of representation? At least through, I think, Settlement Services and possibly through the Newcomer Network. And I'm not entirely sure about who operates the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme.
Yeah, so the Temporary Foreign Worker Programme is actually a new program to cheek. So that's our program. We're funded completely different, and this is to support temporary foreign workers or people that are in closed work permits or are on open work visas, like working holiday visas. So those people were actually able to financially support, for example, if all of a sudden they lose their job and their accommodation. We can't support them for very long, but some emergency funding is available. And also, if they're coming to us needing, if they're working in an abusive situation, for example, which we recently just helped someone, we helped them then reapply for a vulnerable work permit that was fast-tracked through this application process. And then within two weeks, the client had an open work permit. So we're doing something that's, you know, more aligned with, I want to say, labor and education, whereas the Settlement Services will be more of the social aspects of community life, connecting them to schools, connecting them to social, connecting them to community, healthcare services, banking, those kinds of things. So that's where those two programs differ. So we do work closely together that if Settlement Services is working with temporary foreign workers, often they will refer them back to us to help. Now, based on also your question, I did have a discussion with Lisa Riddell yesterday, who mentioned that they have just posted a position for a community, I think she called it a community services representative, that would actually work with Settlement Services and the outreach workers, identify the community issues, and then that would be fed then into Beth LeBlanc, and she manages the cost workers. But we also discussed, we wondered if maybe that position could not be the position that actually kind of represents community outreach services and settlement services jointly, would it instead of having two separate positions? So I think there is ways to streamline that. I think community development from an administration perspective would kind of have that global picture. But is it necessary that it would, that we would have the, you know, like the Chris Reed, for example, at the table versus this CSR position? That, I think, would be administration's decision as to who would be best suited. So then I will pass that on to Bill to maybe to provide some insights on that.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, from an administrative perspective, I think we are certainly happy to support. In terms of the actual committee itself, I think council will want to specify whether it's council or administration or both. And if so, we want to make sure that people that can act as resources to the committee can be there. I would want to make sure that we didn't have inadvertently a member of council plus a director as a senior sort of representative of administration, plus somebody from the Newcomer Network, plus somebody from, then all of a sudden, it basically is a municipality Jasper committee. So we might want to be a bit cautious about that. If council gave direction that there should be an administrative representative, I talked with Mr. Reed about who would be appropriate to do that. We'll make sure that there is a municipality of Jasper in representative and any other resources that the committee might need to inform the decision-making. Of course, we would be happy to supply those. Just making a bit of a distinction between who are acting as a resource to the committee and who is on the committee. So the committee, I think, Jeanette probably has some decision-making authority. And we would want to make sure that that committee wasn't stacked with municipal employees. So we would just be cautious about that. But if council wanted to have a designated municipal administration representative, we would discuss in turn who would be best to kill that. And then we would ensure that the other folks that were there that have perspective on this issue would help, would act as resources to the committee rather than be committee members specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Givern.
Sorry, if I could just add to that, thank you, Bill. I think we could leave the application really as administration, a designated individual from the municipality of Jasper. We don't have to decide who at this point, if that's where the council decides to go. But I did want to just speak a little bit to the Newcomer Network representative. This is not staff. This is of the municipality. This is individual workers that belong to this network. So it would be an, hopefully, an unbiased individual that we would pull into this so that it's not just all kind of agencies, but we actually have a temporary foreign worker or someone, a lived, someone that has a lived experience, maybe.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Councillor Keller MP?
Just a comment. I think this is going to be a great service. Been a temporary foreign worker myself back a long time ago. It's certainly come a long way, and I think this is going to be a great benefit to all the businesses in Jasper. So I do support either a councillor or somebody from admin or both. I just think it's a great step forward for our community.
Thank you very much, councillor. Any other comments, questions? I would anticipate that we would need a recommendation from committee to go to council for a motion to council to appoint a member to this committee, if that's the direction we choose to go. And I'm looking for councillor, perhaps make that recommendation. Councillor Watcher?
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I don't need to jump in if you're prepared to make a motion. I've just been lost in thought about the nature of motion, given the discussion you've had. And so I want to make it a little more general than has been presented. So my motion will be that committee recommend council approve representation on the municipal representation on the proposed stakeholder committee. I use that word so it's not a representative, which is singular. We simply at this time recommend approval of representation. And then we work out the subsequent meeting, whether that might be council and staff or one or the other. And after that, maybe individuals or at least the positions. But I see merit certainly in proceeding and having municipal representation. I'm not entirely satisfied with that enough discussion to figure out how we best support that committee. And I have some concerns about both staff and council because it, with a councillor at the table, it may inhibit staff to some degree. Need not be that way, but it's worth discussion, and I'm not sure that we need to get into that this morning. So if I can backtrack again, the motion is simply that committee recommend that council approve representation, municipal representation on the proposed stakeholder committee as presented this morning.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Wilson?
And just to clarify, if that's if the application is successful, I think, is that not, we don't, we won't know by October, until October. So this is kind of pre-planning a committee if it were to be successful. So we do have time to have the conversation. It's great that it's in front of us now.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Do we have any other comments or discussion? Councillor Watcher?
I just wanted to confirm with Jeanette that that will be, that will cover what she requires for submitting the, what is required by the application.
Yes, thank you, Kathleen. There is no request for names, designated individuals, or designated positions. So I think municipal representation is, will be fine. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the matter? We have a recommendation on the table. If everyone is clear on the recommendation, I would call on the question. All those in favor? And that's carried. And Ms. Marku, thank you very much for the presentation. And we will proceed in subsequent meetings to continue to communicate on this matter.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time today, mayor and council.
We have no other delegations, I take it? So we will be moving on to correspondence. Item six point one, Alberta Justice and Solicitor General. And it will this be addressed by Ms. Givern? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I can speak to it briefly. This is a response to correspondence that Mayor Ireland sent requesting that the government of Alberta apply the modifier for the police funding model to recognize Jasper's extensive shadow population. In essence, the minister says, sorry, you don't have a eventually acknowledged shadow population, so I can't apply the modifier. If you wish to take this issue up, I encourage you to do so with the representatives of Alberta municipalities, rural municipalities of Alberta. If you wish to take this issue up, I encourage you to do so with, uh, the representatives of Alberta municipalities, rural municipalities of Alberta, so police, uh, Alberta Police Interim Advisory Board. Um, so there is offer of course action if possible. Um, and so, uh, Mayor, I have the counsel in counsel's direction made a request. Um, the minister is, uh, informing us that he's not, um, obliging us in that request.
Is there further opportunity to, um, uh, resubmit to the Alberta Police Interim Advisory Board?
So, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I think certainly that is one course of action, uh, and maybe council would want to look at a variety of different channels of advocacy, uh, certainly letting the members of that advisory board, uh, be aware of Jasper's relatively unique circumstance. Um, my understanding is that under the regulations, the minister can, uh, exempt municipalities if it sees fit or sort of modify their payments if he sees fit. Um, this may also be an issue that council would want to, uh, wait and see what happens with the government over the next few months. Um, it's likely there will be changes in ministers and if that's something you'd want to, uh, perceive with a new minister, so it could form a part of that advocacy over a longer term. Uh, another approach could be for, uh, the municipality to advocate with the provincial government uh, for establishing and recognizing shadow population for the municipality, which would have application in other areas as well. So there are a couple of things that we can do nearly focused on justices, solicitor general, police funding. Or maybe more broadly advocating towards the provincial government for establishing shadow population for this company. If council wished to take you to those actions, you could simply refer the correspondence back to administration. Um, with recommendations, uh, and, and ask administration to present recommendations for future action. Uh, I don't have a campaign that would take it away, give some thought to it, go back to you with recommendations. Or if there's something specific council wanted to do, of course, give us that direction.
Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you from this room. Given, uh, I'm not sure we would have it at your disposal right now, but it seems to me that when this matter came up in the spring of this year, we looked at the document which showed the possible modifiers to be applied, one of which was shadow population. And my recollection is that the legislation, or perhaps the regulations rather than the statute seem to imply that the minister had some discretion to apply modifiers. With respect, the response that we received from the minister seems to either ignore or deny that. It says that yes, I hear you want to be recognized as having a shadow population, but you haven't been recognized, so we can't recognize you. And it's, that's frustrating, particularly when the legislation seems to give the minister the opportunity to in fact recognize a shadow population. So although we could um, take it up with Alberta municipalities or others. The point is, it seems to me that the minister has this discretion and I am inclined, um, to respond to this letter saying here's what the legislation says. It is quite clear to us that we have a shadow population. Um, what would it take for you to recognize that we do rather than, and it, the final answer is we can't look at this again for five years, um, in a five-year review. And I just I just find it terribly frustrating that the legislation is written in a permissive fashion to allow the minister to be somewhat flexible and adaptable to circumstance. And yet the response is sorry, there's no flexibility whatsoever. So if we can correctly document those sections of either the regulations or the legislation, and write back, I would be inclined to do that. I don't think it's fair that what is apparent to all cannot be recognized by our provincial government, and that is that we have a shadow population in this community.
Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, Mayor Ireland is correct. Um, the minister does have the authority under ministerial regulation, uh, which you gives the minister a fair bit of latitude to really, um, modify or exempt municipalities and wait until they're required to pay. Um, and so administration certainly can provide that. Uh, if council wished to follow up with this minister and say, well, wait a minute. Under this portion of the regulation, the minister does have the authority and we would request that you exercise your authority in this way. Uh, certainly that's something that, uh, we could certainly point out to them, uh, in the regulation where the minister was at the very, although I would imagine that he and his administrative officials are likely aware, but I think that there's a larger point here, um, in alignment with council strategic priorities about ensuring that others, uh, understand our unique circumstances. Uh, and this might be a case where the minister and officials within justices, solicitor general may need additional information about our unique circumstance so that they really understand uh, how Jasper is different than some other Alberta municipalities might wish to be exempt. Uh, so certainly administration could provide the, the technical information, uh, to support the mirrors, uh, and council's advocacy on this if you wish to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Um, I'm looking around the room to see if there's any other comments. Um, it would be most appropriate to keep this, I think, discussion current and alive with the, uh, Mr. Minister of Justice and Solicitor General. Uh, just to keep it top of mind as there is an opportunity for us to perhaps have some headway, which would then have budget implications in twenty twenty-three and potentially twenty twenty-four as it relates to our cost of policing, which we are now incurring. Um, so I do sense that, uh, there will be a recommendation forthcoming here for us to be able to, um, pursue this with administration. Mr. Given, would the discussion provide you direction, uh, or would you prefer to see a, uh, recommendation from council to refer this to administration? So that we can continue to pursue this as well as perhaps other areas where the shadow population may have an effect on, uh, either funding or, or relief from, from um, being billed, uh, once we establish we have a, a shadow population.
Yeah, uh, Council, yes, I think a motion of direction would be helpful. Uh, I see it's worship, uh, maybe wanted to get to the Q and S will defer to the mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Given. I was simply going to suggest that I, my recollection is that there would have been a motion um, to approve the mayor sending the letter to the minister in the first place. Um, we now have a response, I think, under the existing motion that there is simply um, acknowledgement that it is an ongoing process, um, and that the, the mayor respond with the assistance of Mr. Given, um, to the letter from the minister with least sufficient in the absence of objection, I, I think the standing motion uh, is probably sufficient to allow me to do that. I just didn't want to jump into this further without, um, the awareness and consent of councils. I would think that we have the necessary background by way of motion already. I just wanted to be clear before I um, respond that council is, is content with that, then I can work with Mr. Given, um, to formulate a response.
And I would suspect by the tone of the conversation and council's agreement, that, uh, that would be the course of action. So um, I think this has been, um, brought before council. We have a direction and we can probably move on to the next agenda item. That being agenda item six point two, the Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society Museum and Archives. Um, Mr. Given, are you some background?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Melnick, very briefly, uh, you'll see in front of you a letter of correspondence from the, uh, museum and archives. Um, they have an opportunity to, uh, secure the Bears Den Wildlife Museum, uh, which would obviously be a, a helpful addition to their collection. Um, my understanding is that, uh, the owner of that is looking for a new home. Um, and the essence of the request is that they are, uh, inquiring, and I believe this is the last paragraph, uh, see whether the municipality might be willing to allow them to place a climate-controlled uh, container on municipal property. Um, they would also need to be connected to electrical power to run air conditioning dehumidification, um, to ensure that those specimens are appropriately cared for. Um, the request is here for community's consideration. Administration does not uh, identify whether there's a space for this or, or anything else. Uh, we would take the community's direction. If this was something you wished us to, uh, support and pursue, um, then we would take it away and identify whether or not we had appropriate space and come back to council that answer. But we haven't done that, uh, at work yet. We want to see first, of course, if this is something the council wished the municipality to actively, uh, try to support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Um, counselors. It certainly is, um, maybe I'll just weigh in that the collection certainly is, um, a valuable attraction in our community. And given its current location in the lower level of a building, it may not have received the profile that it could have. Um, if it was in a higher profile location or perhaps part of an existing, uh, building such as a museum, and I think, um, looking at the request, this is a, a step in a process to not lose a collection from the, from the community. And to give us an opportunity to see how we can best celebrate this collection that has been pretty well established by the Sherman family and, and believed over the period of about forty years. And, uh, would probably be second to none in the province. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy, uh, Mayor Melnick. I agree with you. I, as a kid coming here, I went to that museum in the basement. And I would support administration looking into a space to store.
Counselor Wilson.
Um, I, I, I definitely support, uh, assisting, um. I, I don't see the, 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 the museum has quite a large, uh, piece of property there as, as it is. And I, I was just wondering if they have approached Parks Canada to request, uh, temporary storage on their property as a, if they are going to be moving forward with, uh, some type of construction. Um, I just wouldn't want to be, uh, sitting on this for, you know, an, an, an unknown amount of time. Um, so I, I think that they, they are currently probably in the position to store, um, the collection until they have, uh, building permits in place and then are able to move it, uh, and then at that time I would entertain finding a temporary location to, to store. But, uh, I wouldn't want to move it to municipal property, um, without, uh, uh, further permitting in place to, to, to ensure that there is a, a final destination for this, uh, question.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I am supportive of taking whatever steps we can to safeguard that collection in the interim. I appreciate that museum, um, has a goal of retaining it, um, ultimately to present it to the public. And I, I think that's, uh, a really valid thing for the, for the community. So I'm inclined to find a way to do it. And I'm a little bit unclear as to what the storage unit or the storage container might look like. Could it be just a truck body on, on wheels, um, with insulation and, um, the ability to cool. There's lots of such trucks out there. We have in Longas, um, facility. I'm not sure whether there's electricity that would be required, but we store trailers for lots of people. Doesn't seem to be an issue with Parks Canada, that we store trailers, um. Would we not store a trailer for the museum? In a lot that we already have, if that's new. And to the counselor, Wilson's point, we could put a time limit on ourselves and say, we'll offer you the storage for some number of years when you get, um, your development plans approved and actually build a permanent storage facility. We could be in control ourselves of the time we take it. But if, if the issue is um, whether or not the storage trailer fits within motif. There is an area in town and we have, I think, three lots over there that is designed for storage vehicles and trailers. So it seems to me it's a possibility, but I I would be inclined to direct, um, administration to seek out the options that might be available. See what we can do to assist the museum, assuming that they're the ones who are going to be responsible for for securing container unit themselves. That won't be our job.
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Wilson.
Just to speak to that a little further though, um, S block, let's have a way for this on. Um, private, first rated, first one we own, uh, but we do have a commercial, uh, parking area. Again, all all of these would need some type of power and then that power, uh, is at a cost as well. So, um, I think, uh, it sounds as if you mean, the museum has to do a little bit of research on, you know, how much is, uh, how much power does this, uh, time controlled storage, uh? Do they have one in mind? Um, I, I think they would have to come to administration to, and I'm sure we could, um, facilitate it, but, uh, I think they also are responsible to do their homework on how much, uh, what are the costs per month for, uh, for a time controlled storage.
Other comments? I, um, I do know sitting on the museum board that there has been, uh, comments about bringing in and have a trailer. To be able to facilitate this or that type of structure. I had not been involved on the board when the discussion for the existing trailer was put on to the museum, but I, I, um, is my understanding that that was quite a process with Parks Canada. And so I agree with you, Counselor Wilson, that the museum needs to move quickly, but I think they'll move in, they'll be up against the, uh, the permitting and, uh, process that we currently have with land use and planning with Parks Canada as to the vi- ability to, to have that trailer on their existing property. This may be a short-term solution until that can be, that can be, um, accomplished. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, I guess my last, last question would be, uh, is there a timeline on when the, um, election has to be removed?
Mr. Given, I could answer, and, and I think you can concur. The Worcester Zin has established that by the end of October, the collection needs to be removed from the hotel.
Any other?
Mr. Given.
Yeah, uh, certainly if, if council has direction, uh, that they wish to give administration, uh, we, we have to accept that. Additionally, council could, you know, knowing this is the first time that you've seen this request, uh, you could, and administration hasn't sort of worked up the request, come up with options. You could refer the request to administration for a report back in a future, it would be uh, it would be an easy way rather than trying to solve the issue here at table. Uh, you could sort of accept the request, sort of receive the request, send it to administration. We can do a little bit of homework, you know, back to council as well. So that, that's another way as well. Or if there's a specific option, the council would like to direct administration to work with the society on, we'd do that. Those are the sort of three in front of you. Um, give a specific direction on what to work on, uh, receive the request for information and do nothing. Uh, or, uh, refer the request to, to administration, uh, and we could bring back small pieces for you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselors, any recommendations forthcoming? Councillors, any recommendations forthcoming? Mayor Ireland.
In line with CEO Given's comments, I will make a motion that committee direct administration to work with the Jasper Historical Society to identify locations on municipal property for the storage container subject to Parks Canada approval and subject to the society covering any associated costs. I anticipate that administration does that work, they will come back to us with a recommendation. And at that time, we will address the timeline. And I'm not implying to set a timeline right now, but I'm not quite sure how the other pieces are going to fall together. But I don't wish to be seen to ignore that time limit, but I think we will have a further opportunity to compare to that. So, subject to the society covering costs and subject to not many of all of Parks Canada regulations, I would be inclined to be supportive and ask administration to work with the society, see if we can be determined.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Given, you're comfortable with the recommendations, councillors? I'll ask for any further comment or questions. There being none, I would look for a vote to confirm the direction for administration. All those in favor? And that's carried. Moving on to new business, and we have directors' reports. Protective and Legislative Services, Ms. Nidon.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. I'm happy to be here this morning to test drive our new format for directors' reports. So under Mr. Given's leadership, he's developed a template which presents major projects, staffing, service trends and communications and engagement. And it is intentional that it is a one-page report. And we've had a director scheduled, we just hadn't been reporting to council regularly. So you can expect to see these every two months. So that's how I came up with the period of June 1st to July 31st being the highlights of for our department. And you should expect similar reports coming forward in the future from my colleagues, but also for myself in another two months. So you have the report before you. I will speak to a couple of items and happy to take some questions after. One of the highlights, which is not a very happy one, but is the water infiltration at the fire hall. So that is an item that we wanted to bring to council's attention and that this director's report is a good format to present. And essentially, we've been aware of some leakage in the fire tower at the fire hall for quite some time. And over the years, it has been repaired several times, but the source or the actual location of the water infiltration hasn't been identified adequately. And we recently found out the extent of the damages, which meant that there's a support beam at the fire hall in the tower, so immediately above the front office area was quite damaged to a point where it was causing some health and safety concerns and some structural integrity for the building. So that was quite major. So we've evacuated the area, did some temporary shoring, and we have architects and engineers working on an engineered temporary solution to make sure that the the building is not compromised. And we do not know yet the extent of the damages, so we are waiting for that temporary engineered supports to be in place so we can continue the investigation and keep exposing the building, so which might turn into some visible work on the outside of the building as we try to identify for once and for all where the water is coming from. And then finally project the extent of the repairs and the costs. So we're certainly keeping an eye on the capital budget timeline to be sure that we can come to council in a timely fashion, but that is an update that council should be aware of. This does tie into our operating and capital budget work, so we are engaged with the Protective and Legislative Services Management team into the process for 2023, including a focus on priority-based budgeting, which is led by our Director of Finance Administration, Ms. Nunchak, and as well as CEO Given. And it's been a good and interesting process to really delve into the services we provide and quantifying how much time we spend doing things and therefore the budget associated. And we're quite excited to bring that information to council this fall. Under staffing, we've had quite a few changes. The bylaw department being the area that saw the most turnover. I'm happy to report that Laura Wells was our municipal compliance officer, so she was with us last summer doing some paid parking enforcement. And she joined us again in March on an extended term. And we did promote her to the bylaw enforcement officer position, which eventually will turn into community peace officer. So we're excited to see that movement from within, as well as Mr. Troy Jackson, who is, grew up in Jasper and pursued post-secondary education in the field and then applied to be one of our officers. So we also hired him and sent him on training. And I actually met this morning our latest recruit, Daniel Towne, was already in Jasper and has now backfilled the municipal compliance officer position. So that is the one that is the extended term. And focusing a bit more on downtown core issues and paid parking. So he just joined us, which brings us back to full staffing for the bylaw department for the first time in a few months. So given the time of year, this is a very good thing for for Mr. Jones. And I would like to highlight the pride and care and professionalism that Mr. Jones has displayed in training our new hires. He really wants them to be out there equipped to the best of their abilities and sending them to training and giving them the right equipment. So we're working together to make sure that that is being shown and that we show some professional services in the community. We currently have twenty-six active members in the fire department. We have five new recruits, which will become active and certified to be responding to calls at the end of August. And we are also recruiting, there is a recruitment campaign going on. So those, that information is available on our website and social media. I think around thirty active firefighters is what we're looking for, and therefore we're still recruiting a few more members. Service trends, so we pulled some data and we will see as those reports unfold what kind of information council is interested in. And we can certainly adjust what type of information we present here. But sidewalk seating and retail extensions was definitely a big project for us this spring. So twenty-two sidewalk seating permits. Actually, twenty-two sidewalk seating, twenty-one sidewalk seating and one retail extension is the actual breakdown of those twenty-two. For a total of forty-eight stalls being utilized and seven hundred and forty-seven patio seats downtown, which that that number is pretty impressive. And so the revenue at forty-seven thousand has exceeded our budgeted amount for that. So I think we had something around fifteen in the 2022 approved budget, but then the fee structure that was approved by council at the discounted rate of fifty percent this year yielded forty-seven thousand dollars in revenue, so I thought that was worth highlighting. There's a breakdown here of municipal offense tickets and warnings issued in June and July, as well as a breakdown of the calls that the fire department has been responding to for that that two-month period. And I would like to highlight the twelve vehicle accidents. That is, I think, by far what takes up most of our resources and constitutes the bulk of the work that the fire department does, which is related to our service agreement with Parks Canada to answer to those highway calls. And then under communications and engagement, of course, it is wildfire season. Our messaging is ongoing. I'm happy to report that we have a close and effective working relationship with our emergency support services group, so that's Mr. Reed's department, and making sure that everyone gets the information they need in the event of a wildfire. And one of the highlights includes that the evacuation guide was translated in Ukrainian recently to meet what's happening in our community and individuals who might need to access that information. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nidon. Do we have any questions from councillors? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you to Mr. Dog. Thank you for that. I should thank, I guess, Mr. Given as well for the template. But I will observe that it is always so interesting when the design engineer lets somebody else be the test pilot. But thank you for for testing this, and I do think the format is going to work, and thank you for the report. I did have a question about the sidewalk seating and retail expansion program. It's a small matter, but is that you've indicated revenue currently sits at forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars per week? Anticipating then that that is not necessarily closed, that there might be more? And I ask that because at that amount with forty-eight on-street stalls, that's pretty close to a thousand dollars per stall, which is in excess of what I thought for few months. So I I'd be troubled making the numbers work, so tell me what you can about that.
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through the Mayor Ireland. We, that is probably the extent of the revenue we will collect this year. An application could still come, but I think the deadline for the program ends in October for the seasonal program. And I think the way to explain that revenue being higher is that some permit holders are still utilizing the sidewalk for seating, and therefore there's associated fees per seat going in that area. So it's not only the parking lane, but there's a possibility that there's other public plans being used and permitted and therefore have fees applicable, and that's what explains the difference.
Thank you for that. The only other thing I have to say, just a comment, but perhaps to pass along to particularly the fire department and your jurisdiction and the volunteers in particular. And I might be wrong on this, it's just not a goal, but it seems to me that this has been a summer of silence. I just cannot recall all the times I've seen our crews, including the command vehicle and the rescue truck racing up the highway. And you've indicated twelve vehicle accidents, but it seems this summer to be an orderably high. So I just want to pass credit along to those who have to respond to to all of those small and large tragedies on the road. You indicated that it is a time-consuming thing, but it's much more than that. It's it's a soul-gringing experience, and I just want to pass credit along to those of you who do. Perhaps through you, like me.
Thank you, your worship. I am sorry, councillor Wilson, Paul with councillor Hall.
My question was just going to be, in addition to the discussion about the four hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five for the Pride of the City program. And I kind of can't do the answer myself, but we'll sit here, but will we, because it does entail, or it does not just, you can't just divide that number by parking stall and then have a park per parking stall number. But I guess the side, if you're using the sidewalk, you're still affecting that parking stall. So is that like almost all patios, even if they're on the sidewalk? Are they disrupting that parking stall adjacent to it? The only reason I'm asking is, you know, ideally, we'd like to, I, you know, I think we'd like to have a number that we can compare, like first of all, if we compare against first of all for parking at the end of the season. So we know, okay, so are we pretty close? Like if we're allotting a parking stall to to a patio, are we gaining the same revenue as we are if it were a parking stall for paid parking?
Ms. Nidon.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through councillor Wilson, I can offer some observations into your question. I don't have the data in front of me, but there are a few areas where the sidewalk is utilized and there is no implication on the parking stalls. The one that comes to mind currently is the Apple Ascot Hotel. So there's lots of room by the building. There's enough room for the, on the sidewalk for pedestrians to continue, and they do not expand into the parking lane whatsoever. I think you are correct, though, that most either utilize the parking lane or utilize both, might have seating on the sidewalk and seating in the parking lot. Having that said, when council made a decision on the fee per stall for the program this summer, if I recall correctly, administration's proposal was that the fee would be reflective of approximately twenty percent of the income that we could expect to see from a paid parking stall. And that income being calculated on the stall being occupied from nine AM to nine PM continuously, right? Which might be a bit high. And then council took that recommendation and voted that for 2023, that twenty percent of the fee would actually be reduced by fifty percent, given COVID considerations and to allow businesses to participate in the program. So if council continues on with the direction provided previously, that fee should be up to, was it sixteen fifty, I believe? So this year was eight twenty-five, fifty off. Sixteen fifty would recommend, would represent twenty percent of what we could expect to make on the paid parking stall at full occupancy. Is that?
Yeah, it does. And to further, like, so now that we do have another year of paid parking, we could then maybe find two that, like, make, you know, full occupancy probably not, you know, over an average of a full term of patio seating or parking, right? Because they're coinciding with the with the same dates in it. So if, like, you know, my goal would be to have an average, you know, I guess a stall is not full-time through from May first to October thirty-first. And hopefully we can then say, okay, we have this average amount of stalls, or sorry, this total amount of stalls, and we made this much, and so average per stall over the whole six months. And then we can really more accurately compare that to our cost to the patio. But so hopefully we're going to kind of come to some that, you know, get some better data throughout, through the both these programs and be able to use that as all kind of go down there. Thank you.
Ms. Nidon.
I may, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I know, well, certainly we will return to council with a report on how paid parking went in the fall and be able to present some of those stats. And Mr. Given is also involved in the Commercial Use of Public Space Task Force, which is taking a close look at the sidewalk seating program. And between those two initiatives, I'm sure we can return to council with some information along the lines of what you suggested.
Thank you very much. councillor Hall.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Just a quick comment and then a question. I, it seems like a really busy summer, and when I'm downtown, our new bylaw officers are phenomenal. I see them interacting with our tourists and helping them with paid parking. It's great customer service. My question is about the rotten support beam in the fire tower. Is there any insurance that would help with that? Do you have insurance, the building insurance, that kind of thing?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through the councillor hall, that is a good question. The insight I have is more on a well, not on a personal basis, but it, my understanding of how insurance works is that if it's a long-term leak, you may not be covered. If it's a pipe burst and there's water damage, that's likely covered. I mean, having that said, we could certainly investigate, but we are in the early stages of still detecting what's happening. Like, we still don't know where the water is actually coming from. I think we might have identified one potential source, but there's probably more than one, which explains why that issue was not addressed over time or was attempted to be addressed but never quite successful.
councillor Hall.
Just another question so I can understand. So a support beam would be in the ground above, like, to me, a leak would be a basement thing, but I'm just curious how, is it up high? Maybe if you could explain the actual, what's happening here?
I can. Deputy Mayor Melnick through the councillor hall. Essentially, the beam in question is in the ceiling of the office. So when you walk into the fire hall, the host tower is the the tall part of the building. And when you get in, on the left, there's an office there, which typically houses our admin assistant and our training officer. And so immediately in the ceiling, right above their office, is where the beam in question is located. So the infiltration, we assume, came from, I think at the time, they tried to fix the deck on the host tower, so it might have been coming in through there. There's a door on that second story. And but it could also be going towards the bays and the the big bay doors, and we don't know where the water is coming from currently. But so from the exterior building envelope is likely where it came from. And as you can imagine, replacing a beam in a structure that is already built, like those beams get installed during construction usually. So removing it and replacing it is going to be quite the project. So, and having that said, and having that said, uh, the operations department has been leading this task and uh, so kudos to the maintenance team who identified that there wasn't a a bigger problem than we thought. And thankfully we caught it on time and there was no impact on the safety of the people in that office, but also to try to from an asset management perspective, try to resolve it once and for all.
Any other questions or comments for Counselor Waxer?
I just wanted to give kudos for the translation of the evacuation guide. I think that's such an important document and for someone under, under duress or under strain, to be able to read in their own language and to have the information um, clear and understandable is really important. So I, I just want to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Counselor Keller MP?
Okay, Deputy Mayor Melnick and Deputy Mayor Melnick, the Mr. Don. I'd also like to thank you for a great job. I've seen by law downtown and they're very friendly and great with the tourists and the residents. Um, I just have a question on the fire hall building. The residents that live on the back, their area is safe?
Thank you for the question, um, Deputy Mayor Melnick through the Counselor Keller MP. My understanding is yes, the rest of the building is um, is okay. And it is so the area where the beam in question uh, we're having issues is by Mayeth Avenue. So even uh, the fire base, the rest of the offices, and therefore the rest of the structures will be ambulance space and the apartments above it are safe to occupy. And, and we are dealing with uh, engineers and architects to be sure that, that assessment is, is founded on professional opinions. So we're confident that that's the case.
Thank you, Ms. Nino.
I'd like to thank you for this report and um just would encourage that, that repair um, once we receive the information that we would move forward quickly before winter to, to hopefully try to have that resolved in that building. It certainly is a lot easier to do this type of work um, when the snow's not flying and when it's minus twenty. And again, a long-term solution to that asset is uh, I think most appropriate. Is there, Counselor Wilson? No? Um, I would suggest we need a motion to approve this report for uh, information. Um, with much appreciation from all of us, uh, Counselor Waxer makes that motion. All of those in favor? And that's Carrie. Moving on to new business item seven point, oh, Mr. Counselor Wilson.
Maybe a quick five minute break?
We can certainly do that. I would suggest that we'll take a break at ten forty-five and return at uh, ten fifty.
Counsel, if, uh, it seems like we're uh, gathering information that will answer the questions that you're likely to have. Mr. Goodman has thirty years of experience in land use planning and public administration. He has a bachelor's of environmental studies uh, from the University of Waterloo and then a master's in public administration. He's also a registered planner um, in the province. And he has experience both as a chief administrative officer as well as a director of planning. So not just the technical aspects of planning, but also the organizational structural aspects of planning. Uh, setting up a department, uh, which is something that we're interested. So uh, Mr. Plutman's here, Albert is here. Um, and maybe Albert will turn it over to you to introduce yourself to council. And to provide an overview of the uh, major areas of inquiry that you're going to be up here taking in your research.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Given. A good morning Deputy Mayor Melnick and members of council. Uh, appreciate this opportunity to meet you virtually. Um so I've been retained to uh, to do the study as Mr. Given has described. Um this is a, uh, certainly an interesting opportunity for the municipality of Jasper and, and an interesting uh, project for, for me to undertake on your behalf. Uh in essence, the, the deliverable at the end of the day is, is going to be a detailed report to provide guidance to both administration and council as, as you move forward with, with uh, uh, your decision-making. Um, I'd be looking at carefully uh, uh, existing responsibilities that could be shifted to planning development staff, uh, in addition to a planning development oversight. Uh, I'll be determining recommended roles for in-house staff versus contracted services. I'll be looking at uh, options for senior management oversight. Should uh, Mr. Given grow his uh, increase the number of people on the senior management team, or should we, we nest the, the planning development services under an existing director? Um I'm going to be looking at workload and, and developing uh, estimates for full-time equivalent positions. So you have an idea of the the kind of staffing you would need to, to meet the need for the services based on historical permit volumes and the like. Um, I'll be looking carefully at qualifications for staffing, qualifications and experience. And, and then from there I'll be uh, looking at the, the financial implications, salary benefits, overhead costs and, and other costs that the municipality could expect to experience. And, and so again, all of that would be to inform your decision-making both for uh, both to, to make the decision to create a department and uh, in terms of, of budgeting and, and organization. Um, I've been speaking with uh, some of your staff members already and I'll be speaking with a couple more this afternoon, just to get their get their perspectives and make sure I'm covering uh, the questions that uh, that they have and, and and focusing on, 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 on concerns that they have. Uh, those have been excellent conversations so far. Uh, a credit to your organization, I must say. I've, I've really enjoyed these, these conversations. And at this point, uh, with your permission Deputy Mayor Melnick, I, I would appreciate uh, any, any feedback from members of council uh, at this point in time. What questions do you have that you believe need to be addressed as part of this study? And also what do I need to know to successfully carry out this project from your perspective? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Um, we'll hand to council. If um there are any questions or clarification, Counselor Wilson?
Um, just my fir- first uh, item that popped into my head even before uh that is. Oh, yeah.
Your time's over.
Yeah. As may I go back to administration, uh, though, uh, the last sentence of uh, the background info, first paragraph, it, it suggests that uh um, we're working towards transitioning by a little later than twenty thirteen. Uh, in my recollection of the meeting, uh, we suggested transition by the end of this term of uh, council.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, sorry, uh, through Deputy Mayor Melnick, Counselor Wilson. Uh, that line you're looking at uh, was in June of twenty twenty one, council requested that the Jasper National Park Management Plan incorporate that line. Uh, so that's what we asked for back last year. Uh, since that you're a hundred percent correct and the discussions directed at Parks Canada was uh, that timeline was advanced. So that's just a reflection of the motion and council made back in June of twenty twenty one. So certainly the current is uh, the, you know, business that arose from the May eleventh, twenty twenty two.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to highlight that. I think uh, we have to get through for all council that uh, we'd like to see um, tangible movement forward uh, in the short term, not the, you know, medium term, I guess is what it is, but thank you. Um, yeah, that's, that's pointed. Yeah, I don't have anything further right now.
Have a question, uh, if I may, for Mr. Goodman. Um, in your recommendations, um, depending, I guess, on what you find what an optimum staffing could be for our municipality. Um, will you also be developing recommended turnaround times for projects, or is that something that would be beyond what's what you're being asked to do?
Thank you for the question Deputy Mayor Melnick. Uh, that isn't part of the scope for, for this assignment. Uh, it's certainly a subject of a lot of conversation these days. I'm, I there's a lot of interest in, within the province of the B C to, to look at um, development approval timelines and, and ensuring that that the processes are streamlined as much as possible to ensure that there are no internal barriers to creating needed housing in particular. So I'm, I'm seeing that happen. So it's definitely a a relevant issue, a relevant question. Um, hasn't been part of the scope at this point. But I think it, it's a great comment and uh, I'm, I'm making a note of it because I'll seek to address it in, in my staffing recommendations. Thank you.
Counselor Wilson?
Uh, it, it looks to me um that this is very municipally cited focus that will there, will you be discussing or getting information from um, Parks Canada? And if so, who, who will be uh, supplying that information for you?
I, part of my project uh, is to speak with Parks Canada. I have not, not yet identified a contact, but I'll be speaking with Mr. Given. I, I need to talk to him in the next day or two about progress on this project and I'll be identifying a contact at that point in time. Yes.
Yes, you do. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I think it's likely we would connect Albert with uh, probably both uh, or and then the manager of municipal realty services as well as Dave Priceback. There's certainly the incumbents in this area that are running the current service. Uh, I think we'd want to get a bit of a baseline of what the current service looks like, what their current service standards are. Um, so that we can understand what service is currently receiving um, from a parks perspective. And of course we match that up with the community perspectives as well. So uh, those are the two likely individuals that uh, I would work to connect Albert with.
Counselor Wilson?
Yeah, just uh to respond to that, I, I do believe there are probably two, two proper uh, positions to be talking, speaking to, but I guess then to add some advice to uh, Mr. uh, Plutman is that these are two positions that would be greatly affected by uh, municipality taking over land use and planning. So just to be advised that you'll be speaking to two individuals, one, one in particular, that may or may not have a position at uh, once land use and planning uh, is transferred to the municipality. So you take that away.
You mean, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the caution offered by Counselor Wilson, uh, and I will keep that in mind when I speak with these individuals. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you to our Mr. Plutman, I, I have a series of questions, but it might be best to, I combine them because they're, they're all linked. So um with your permission, I'll, I'll do that. I'm, I'm interested sort of in, in scope of your assignment to some extent and to what degree um, there might be subjective elements as opposed to objective elements in it. And in particular, I'm wondering what assumptions might underlie your process. So in particular, are you assuming the transfer of the full slate of land use, planning and development responsibilities from Parks Canada to the municipality or potentially only some aspects thereof? And related to that, in the bullet points in the report from Mr. Given, which is not your report, but the, the report before council. The opening bullet is that you will give advice on existing municipality of Jasper responsibilities that could be shifted to planning and development staff. So I assume that is existing responsibilities. But what about existing Parks Canada responsibilities that could or should be shifted to municipal jurisdiction? Will, will your report provide us any advice with respect to that overarching question about what we should be asking for or potentially not asking for in the transfer jurisdiction?
Uh, thank you for the, for the question Deputy Mayor Melnick, uh, to, to you. Um so objective versus subjective. Obviously, the, the objective elements would be looking at things like development permit volumes, uh, re- land use, bylaw amendment, uh, applications, um, and, and other uh, discrete items of, and, and tasks that planning and development staff would undertake. And so I, I will be seeking to relate volumes to staffing and, and, and I'm, I'm going to be comparing Jasper to four or five other municipalities, um most or all of which are, are going to have a a, a, a shadow population, a, a, a tourism aspect to them, uh, so that we, we we, we have some relevant comparisons. There's always going to be some subjectivity in, in that regard. Um, but we'll, we'll do our best to, to uh, to, to use numbers in, in, in developing our recommendations. Um some of the subjectivity is going to be, going to involve uh, recommendations around the, the qualifications and experience of staff that, that'll be hired. And I'm, I'm seeing a need for uh, already for experienced staff to, to jump into this role, because they will be involved in, in establishing a new service, a new planning development department. And we need some strong leadership and, and ability to be able to do that. It is, it's not, it's not a place to put uh, a newcomer to, to the planning profession, for example, or a new development officer. Um yeah, transfer of the whole slate versus portions of, of Parks Canada work. Uh, Mr. Given and I have not had a a lengthy discussion about that. Uh, it's my understanding that this is a focus on, on planning and development, uh planning functions, but with an emphasis on, on development approvals. Um, the, a lot of pure planning work really takes the form of reviewing and updating uh, community plans, whether it's municipal development plan or, or the, the, the plan for Jasper as a community within a national park. Those kinds of projects are often undertaken, undertaken by consultants, uh, of course, directed by uh, a, a municipal staff member. But undertaken by, by consulting team, because you're rarely going to have the resources in-house to do that, that kind of work successfully. Um, I think I'm going to have to have a conversation with Mr. Given about possibly other elements, other approvals that Parks Canada uh, is is handling or may continue to handle and whether or not those should be, be part of the conversation. So I'll definitely have a look at that. Um, now what about existing um uh, responsibilities with, within the municipality of Jasper? That's part, part of the, the purpose for speaking with a number of your staff members is to get a, a sense of where they're doing work that is perhaps outside the, the normal jurisdiction of their, their position or their department. And where planning and development group could really help them. One example would be um dealing with things like utilities. One example would be dealing with things like utilities that are usually entered into as a result of a of a of a development approval. Another example might be supporting the the licensing process because licensing often follows issuance of a development permit. And so there's there's crossover between planning and development and existing functions. So I'm definitely going to be examining those and and determining what what makes sense and and doing that, of course, in in consultation with with your team. So that's, I I think that's the best answer I can give for for Mayor Ireland's questions at this point in time. If you've got a follow up question, I I certainly attempt to deal with it. Thank you.
No, thank you, sir. It was a it was a very thorough and articulate response to a very disjointed question. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Counsel Wilson, followed by Counsel Keller and P.
Well, first off, I'm really looking forward to the to the outcome of this project. You know, so the municipality is taking steps forward after the discussion we had with the Parks Canada late spring of this year. And I just, my question would be to Mr. Given, what kind of concrete steps forward have Parks Canada done? Are they undertaking a similar study on their side? And if not, are they going to commit some bodies to work?
Through Deputy Mayor Melnick, Counsel Wilson, Parks Canada and municipality have had a couple of meetings administratively. This is being coordinated out of the executive director for Canada Alberta, her office. And so they're handling that administrative function. They're also going to be providing information with respect to sort of the legislation, which will be information that Mr. Flutman will be able to use, administration will be able to use to make sure that we're understanding the legislative context. Because obviously we're unique in our location of national park, but there are laws that apply here that don't apply in other Alberta municipalities. So they're probably best suited to that kind of work. And obviously we'll check their works just to make sure that we agree with what they're intervening is applying to Jasper's context. I would, I would concur. The approach that we're taking right now is that the work product that Mr. Flutman is going to develop is property of the municipality of Jasper. And as the person paying the bill, we have full influence over that. I suggest that that's appropriate in this situation where we're essentially will likely enter into a negotiation phase. This is information that will help council inform what position you want to take in those negotiations. So I don't really see it being a shared approach in terms of what should the municipality's department look like in the future? And what should the municipalities or what could the municipality's service look like? I think that's something that is certainly, you know, council direction. Parks have been very cooperative though in terms of how to discuss what parts of the project they supply and really that analysis of the sort of legislative context is that part of it that we're best suited to.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Keller and P.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you to Mr. Given. Will this study cover transfer station, some of the assets that may come over? And if so, like what the requirements have bring them up to the Alberta standards?
Deputy Mayor, I'm I'm sorry, Counselor Keller, I just missed the first part that it isn't going to be looking at existing infrastructure, although I think that that might not exactly trigger questions.
It was more to do with kind of the transfer station, like would that be coming over part of land use, planning and development? And if it is, will this study look at what requirements will have to take place for that to come up to the Alberta standards?
No, so the transfer in this maybe that attached a little bit to Mayor Ireland's question previously. The work that Mr. Flutman is doing for us is focused exclusively on land use, planning and development approval functions. There may be other service overlaps between municipality and the operation of the waste transfer station is certainly an example of that. That would be, that's outside of the scope of the work that we're asking Mr. Flutman to do. There might be other areas where we may wish to take on some other services, not related to land use, planning and development board and have that discussion. There may be some services that Parks Canada would like us to take on and deliver on their behalf that may like to get out of the line of service. And I think I would leave it to them to identify that to us rather than us offering to take on things that might not be top priority for council. But certainly, looking at council's priorities, you know, acquiring land use, planning, development authorities top of the list, as we all know, and that really is the the essential focus of Mr. Flutman's work. All those other associated services or or adjacent services would be things that administration will handle those discussions and any research or requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Any other questions from counselors? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. My question through Mr. Given is just with respect to the financial impact, you've indicated the anticipated cost and that it will be funded from existing sources. Does that suggest at all that there is anything else that was already in the approved budget that won't go forward?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick, for Mayor Ireland. So we do, of course, have within our budgets amounts allocated for these consultants. So that's what I'm referring to here. It does mean that if council wants to do a study on some other topic, we'll have limited capacity that that recognizes priority decide of what is appropriate to dedicate the resource that we have left in our budget this point in the year to this point.
Thank you. So we have narrowed our options going forward, but we haven't changed direction or discontinued anything.
That's correct. There are no projects that are being deferred to take this on. It does mean that if council identifies some other project that we would need outside consultants, we probably have limited capacity to do so.
I would maybe ask, Mr. Flutman, do you have any other comments for council or any of the discussion that you would like to add?
No, I don't think I have anything to add, Deputy Mayor Melnick. This has been a very helpful conversation for me and it's been a pleasure to again meet you virtually. Thank you.
Counsel Wilson.
My apologies, but just the timeline, when when do you think we'll see something back?
Deputy Mayor Melnick, the 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 timeline that I've discussed with Mr. Given is to to have a draft report, a draft final report to him by the end of September, but we're going to have a discussion in mid September to to talk about the the financial implications possibly for for twenty twenty three in in time for twenty twenty three budget preparations. And so I I would expect a final report to council sometime in October at this point, unless our timeline changes for reasons beyond my control.
Thank you very much for that additional information and clarity. I'd be looking for, if there's no other comment or or questions, I'd be looking for a recommendation that we receive this report. The Land Use Planning and Development Research Update for Information. Counsel Wilson.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And again, I'll ask any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you, Mr. Flutman. I look forward to re-engaging with you in the next few months.
Thank you.
Brings us now to agenda item seven point three, the Snake Hill tobogganing. And Mr. Grayhead is here as well to address this for us, so please proceed.
Is it working? Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Back on January eleventh of this year, council director administration investigated that resuming the sledding activity at Snake Soul Rocker was restricted due to the safety concerns of the residents and children sledding to the bottom of the hill and into vehicular traffic. So that was addressed and there was a report that was prepared and presented with council in twenty sixteen about regarding regarding the risk management on tobogganing hills. We did look at the site and review the site for concerns to see if it was feasible in any way to make sledding possible there. There was one slope that might be manageable, but it goes into a new development. Not someone who's really a significant enough angle to go not onto the road, but they plan on building more facilities there within the next year. So that kind of eliminated that option. And while it's it seems seems like the hill's pretty small, one of the defining or determining factors for tobogganing hills is that there's got to be a natural spot for a run out where riders can safely decelerate and come to a natural stop. Anything we do at that would be prohibitive without going onto the street. The burn that would be need to be built to stop sledders from going out on the street would have a steep angle and would cause further risk there. So that left us really only with two options that we are to recommend. And one is being a temporary or a special bed closure where we can proceed closing it down for about a three day, four day period of and maybe up to two, up to twice a year is our recommendation. And that would be when sledding conditions were often also was perfect. And then we can put up a proper traffic control measures and fencing to prohibit vehicular traffic in the area and allow for natural run out. And we would need to do an inspection of the sledding surface daily. Where are we to do that? And we estimate that the cost of setting up and turning that down to offer a couple of sledding parties through the year would be about fifteen hundred dollars to twenty five hundred dollars depending on how much work was required to prep the hill we're set up of that. The other option that was considered is a seasonal closure. And a seasonal closure could take place, but would require more robust traffic control setup and that would include concrete barriers. Would need to do daily inspections, just like we do with a centennial sledding area on throughout the winter. And this option would be much more problematic due to the density of the residents, residences. There there are a couple of apartment buildings and parking is quite congested in that area, especially in the winter, once the snow creeps in and they're losing spots by losing space to store snow in some of those parking lots. We we figured that's going to be problematic as well for snow removal and traffic movement throughout the winter. But we discussed it and it would be workable if that was to be a consideration. And emergency services will also be somewhat impacted. They just need to be notified of that of closures and and plan for how they would respond to calls accordingly. We estimate that a seasonal closure would cost between six hundred dollars per setup. And then we would again have some smaller costs to ensure that we inspected the hill on a routine basis. So the recommendation is from administration is the committee received this report for received this report for information. And that committee directed administration to investigate other potential sites developed on tobogganing hill in the south end of the townsite.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grayhead. Questions from counselors? Counsel Wilson?
My question is regarding option two, a seasonal closure. Do you foresee it, do you foresee the intersection be completely closed or would there be an opportunity to have some building traffic going underway around the runoff for the toboggans?
Thank you for the question. We decide, we we kind of determined that we would need to completely block off that intersection going through onto Geeky Street, a significant amount, just to ensure that we have the run out. Part of the problem that we have here is the snow that we get. It comes in little layers and we all just has the ice secretion that builds up. So we're not sure of the actual distance that would be necessary to to allow for that smooth run out without obstacles. So that's part of the problem we face with that intersection.
Other counselor questions? Counsel Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question again is kind of along the lines of Counsel Wilson. So you'd have you'd have to close Geeky Street down a little, a little bit. You just couldn't close it for Geeky Street. The deep, the low ends, you have to pave it a bit further down. And my other question is, with temporary closures, is the fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred per time per closure or over the course of the winter for a couple of closures?
That would be if we're to do a couple of closures. We figured that the two closures would be anywhere in the neighborhood of fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred dollars. And that would include for staff time setting up the construction fencing and signage. So we'd need putting up the signs beforehand to make sure that the vehicles have adequate time to move to if necessary on that. And part of the appealing part of for the temporary option is that I noticed that centennial, especially during the dead of the winter, there's not much sledding activity going around. I know I know there's there are beach lines seasonal, seasonally, where it seems there's every kid on the hill. And then quite often they can be weak smilings without ever seeing that someone using the facility. So that's why we, you know, our preference would be the option.
Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you to Mr. Grayhead or to potentially the false my place, Mr. Given. I I'm just interested in any recommendations that might be forthcoming based on the report that's attached. I don't look at the specifics of that report, but I I noted in reading the reports from juvenile insurance agencies a suggestion, very strong suggestion, that council should have improved policy in place of dealing with levels of service for the tobogganing hills. And with or without Snake Hill, because we we have other tobogganing hills and I would like to know what we might need in terms of a policy, because I haven't made a fine a policy in our policy manual that deals with it. There are additional questions related to signage and the report indicates minimal signage at the top of the hill. And I appreciate there are all sorts of opportunities for second guessing where you put a sign, what it says. But it seems to me that it is something that we should at least address our minds to figure out. I'm not entirely sure what signage depending is that the bald iron where sledding has been encouraged or similarly by the capital church. So apart from just the question, this is a question of Snake Hill. Might we get some recommendations from administration with respect to these other items that are flagged in the report that we have from the insurance suggestion?
Thank you for the question. Right now, our procedure is to inspect the tobogganing hills as we do our playgrounds. So we do inspections on those. If we notice that there's been a ramp built or a jump or an obstacle of some sort, we go and we send stuff to remove them and remove any hazards like that. But right now, we just treat them as we do our playground inspections. So we do not have a separate policy or directive on the tobogganing hills at this point.
And it would be council's obligation to provide a policy and then you can work the procedures. But it is a major point made in that report from Jubilee Insurance. It just seems to me we shouldn't do this side of that. The biggest issue here, and I think the reason we took the steps we did with the previous council was the risk of injury to individuals, of course, and the risk of municipality losses. There are ways to better position ourselves with respect to all of the laws. So I think we should be looking at both sides of that first.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from councillors? Councillor Watson?
I was just, in reading this, one thing that stood out to me was the impact on emergency services. And I think that would be also present in option one. And so before we move forward on anything, would emergency services, let's now be consulted as to the impact of that.
Thank you for that. Anytime we perform a road closure, we obviously notify the fire ambulance and police services that we have a road closure in place so that they're aware and they can dispatch accordingly. And the same procedure would happen in this event.
I had to say additionally, any closure of that intersection by definition would reduce the number of routes that are available for emergency vehicles to get through that area. And so certainly, Mr. Grayhead's right, that we would inform them about when it's happening. But cutting off a road would reduce the number of paths that a person could take for both the public and emergency vehicles. That's just a part of the issue that council would be clear of.
Thank you, Mr. Given and Mr. Grayhead. In option one, the discussion was around one or two temporary closures for a certain period of time. Now, how was that option developed just as an opportunity for, for example, if residents in the area wanted to create a special event around the hill and celebrating, maybe at 50 Christmas, 50 Family Day? Was that the purpose of that recommendation?
Thank you for the question. That's exactly what the recommendation was for. We do know that there is a sentiment that the tobogganing in that area was a nice thing to have. And myself, it feels like a loss of service that we don't have that availability. So really, we were trying to consider a workaround and trying to make it possible.
And then I think that a community group or would have to then make the request to by law for a special event permit to initiate anything to happen regarding a closure for three days, four days.
I think councillor, Deputy Mayor Melick, that alternative is intended to say, well, so just to be really clear, the report administration's saying, we don't recommend that you do anything. We recommend that you receive this report for information and direct administration to identify other opportunities. So we can talk about what other opportunities might exist. Administration always wants to find alternatives though as well. It said, well, if the choice was to close, closing only sometimes is better than all winter. And so that's what option one is. Now, how we might go about that, I think there would be some details that we have to work out. Is that up to community groups to do or would it be administration planning and organizing events? We hadn't gone to that level of detail. It's really, okay, administration's stressing keep it open all the time. Or maybe only close for limited periods. Or we could directly, you know, close for the entire winter. And so we hadn't gone to the level of detail of establishing a program design or a event management design. It really was that sort of order presence of saying, you know, how would you do this? And the information council would need in terms of, you know, common practice and those sort of things.
Well, appreciate the diligence of administration to provide a variety of options as opposed to, you know, saying it's not feasible or we recommend alternatives. It is an interesting way of looking at the use of an area of the community, perhaps at a future date. Looking at councillors, are seeing any other conversation, any other questions? Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melick. I am considering, in addition to whatever motion might be forthcoming, but I want to see what administration's preference might be. What I'm thinking about is either an additional subset of the motion to either direct administration to prepare and present to a future community of all draft policy and administrative procedures regarding tobogganing on municipal land. Or alternatively, refer that question to the legislative committee. Would there be any preference by administration on how to do that? So I think it is appropriate that we have a policy on that. It is within council's jurisdiction. It is something that a legislative committee could look at. In fact, we would need to have a policy that also incorporate as a first step, all the procedures that would go with that. And that is much more in the staff domain. So I just wonder whether administration would have a preference or would we prefer that to a legislative committee that's more or less designed for those sorts of issues or just lead it to staff with a direction from community of all to come back as a thing?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melick, for Mayor. And my suggestion would be that committee could direct administration to bring back a draft policy for committee and councils as a consideration. Certainly, we can assist you by, you know, creating the outlines of a policy and draft that the committee and council can think of. The legislative committee, you know, most of its work has been focused on procedure by law. There's still a significant amount of procedure by law that the committee hasn't looked at yet and I think will still need to undertake. So I'm not sure that it has the capacity to do this fairly technical work and the procedure by law. Certainly leave that up to you and councillor Hall and councillor devoted, side of the crass case there. But administration is happy to support council if there's direction to develop a draft by law, or sorry, a draft policy. We can do that work. Right back to you. We do have a similar policy in the outdoor skating rink policy. I could imagine it being a template in either developing one that is specific to sledding or tobogganing hills or a outdoor recreation facility service standards policy that would incorporate the skating rinks and tobogganing hills and playgrounds that Mr. Grayhead referenced. If council wanted to further this with administration, we could come back to you with a draft.
Well, thank you for that. And on behalf of councillor Hall and myself, and particularly on behalf of councillor Comoda, I thank you for your astute aversion to more work for the legislative committee.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would, can I make a motion or can we make a motion with one of the recommendations and one of the alternatives at the same time? I do think, I know we talked about it's a high dense area, but it's a high dense area full of families. And there was a significant loss when State's Hill closed. I had kids at the time that were sledding age and it's too far to walk to Centennial. I think, I live in that area and I try and think of other places that there could be tobogganing hills. I'm just not really sure where, maybe around Cabin Creek. But I would support the option of temporary closures, at least have the option there for the summer. And I like the idea of Christmas and Family Day, just to see if it works and what, how far down Geeky Street we close the road and it's temporary just a couple of times might be a little less impactful on the residents and it'd be amazing.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Any other comments? Councillor Wilson?
Not adverse to that. I definitely am not for option two. I did, I was very optimistic one. I was hoping that there might be an option that, you know, slow traffic, but traffic could still, single lane, make those turns. So the vehicles wouldn't have to U-turn and drive out. I still think that there might be an option in that regard, but if administration has looked at it and there's just not the space to make that happen, then I definitely don't support a full closure or full seasonal closure. I'm not adverse to option one, but I don't see it, you know, really growing legs. But I'm also definitely not into council and legislative committee spending time making policy on tobogganing. It's a simple sport. It's just, honestly, I think that, Ms. Melick, council has more pressing issues. Okay, maybe if it's an outdoor recreation policy and tobogganing is incorporated in that, sure. But if we start making the policy on tobogganing, well, how about cross-country skiing in the fields? And so honestly, I think we have other things on our plates. I almost like that. We've looked at it. We can't, there is no support for full closure. You know, we may try some temporary closures at some point, but we looked at it and that's all that we're looking at.
Any other comments? What we gain in my own comments is that I would support looking at other options for tobogganing in the community as opposed to the State's Hill option. And that may mean some development work. But I think the report that we received indicated that it wasn't a safe area and safe activity. And even though we may try to mitigate it with temporary closures or full closure, I think that time in the community was now gone by. The community's busier. We're building more residential accommodation in that area. There certainly will be more pressure on parking, making that even more difficult to, I think, execute. So when we get to an opportunity for recommendations, I would be certainly be more inclined to be looking elsewhere for tobogganing than on that particular hill. Any other comments or do we have a recommendation from council? Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would make the recommendation that committee direct administration to investigate other potential sites to develop the tobogganing hill in the south end of the townsite.
Thank you, councillor Hall. Any other comments, discussion? All the questions, all those in favor? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation? All those opposed? So we have five members and one opposed. Moving along.
Before we move along, by name, that was a motion with respect to one matter that's before us, that is further investigation, and I support that. I will make a motion at this time that committee receive the report for information, just to document that we have. And I would move that committee direct administration to prepare and present to a future community of all a draft policy and administrative procedures regarding tobogganing on municipal lands. And I make that motion because we have, I think, an obligation not only to safeguard users of tobogganing hills, but to safeguard, to the extent we can, our taxpayers against lawsuits. And without a policy, the clear indication from the insurance agent is that we are exposed where we need not be exposed. So a policy need not be prescriptive in how you toboggan. It simply gets us to the point where we can prove signage, for example, that says, this hill is unsupervised. We recommend that you wear a helmet. If you see a problem, call this number. And that's the suggestion in that report. And it protects municipality and our taxpayers from lawsuits. Tobogganing is a wonderful activity, but there are risks. And we can't protect against all of the physical risks, but we should do what we can to protect the municipality from legal risks. And there's a clear indication that a policy would help. So I make my motion primarily to get some work done there because I think that it is our duty as trustees of the public purse to make sure that we protect it to the extent we can. And further even to the extent that we have insurance, if we don't take the steps available to us that have been advised to us by the insurance industry, we might void our own policy. But I think that developing a policy is not going to be particularly onerous, but it has real benefit to the municipality. That was my.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Wilson?
Then why not incorporate more legislative tobogganing in that policy? Like why not an outdoor sports or outdoor, you know, you're kind of singling out one activity, but riding bike down that same hill in the summer or if we're putting on trust, not these skis are posing the same risks. So tobogganing would be, you know, that's what I don't think we should be doing policy on tobogganing. That's for sure. Like more on usage of our local states. I would be in support of.
Well taken. And we could easily amend, slightly amend the motion, because as Mr. Given said, we've already got that for outdoor skating. So use of, maybe it would be a policy for use of raw land in the municipality. But I don't want to ignore the clear advice from a routine expert on insurance matters that says we'd be better off with a policy. And yes, maybe it would not be restricted to tobogganing specifically. But we expose our community and our taxpayers, I think, unnecessarily with a policy.
May I ask, Mr. Given, what his suggestion was in regard, what the wording of policy regarding?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Melick, for the counsel's idea. So I think I'm going to say it's something along the line of an outdoor recreation facility service standards policy. So you have council by policy establishing and directing administration to establish standards around outdoor recreation facilities. And Mr. Grayhead mentioned that there are already administrative procedures that are happening with Sabre Dune. So I don't think the administrative procedure would be that of ours. And I think that there would be a way to do that to incorporate things like outdoor playgrounds, tobogganing hills, skating rinks. uh, skating rinks in a one comprehensive policy. The details of how it's actually happened, but it's having to be in a certain moving district procedures, but council would be able to do the diligence and protect the public interest. There are nobody by established that policy. So a comprehensive way might be for recreation facilities service standard policy.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Or, or maybe just outdoor recreation opportunities because facilities then, then it doesn't incorporate the raw land, say, above uh, who was that?
So uh, I, I, we may be getting into a nuance that would be sort of known as we find what the city is. And so if council gave us this direction, then we would sort that out for you and you could see if we thought right. Um, but just off the top, I would say that um, is unlikely the municipality would have a policy where we don't have I'm, where we don't have an engineered structure of some kind that we are directing people to use for recreation. So you, you brought up an example, so we write our bike down in the middle well, or on any street in the spelling. Those are somehow, you know, we have to, I mentioned somehow different player, which is an engineered structure that potentially directly people go and play on this, you know, uses for recreation. We can have a look. I'm sure there are other policies like this. Certainly we're not the only ones who've received a recommendation from their insurers that you need to have a policy. I'm sure there's others that we can adapt. Um, but I think that we want to be careful of the scope because you can say, well, there's lots of different types of recreation. We can have a policy that covers everything. Well, um, it is uh, yeah, we can get some scope creeps from municipalities trying to regulate all types of outdoor activities where in fact you have actually directed people to use that activity or create a, a, a place that draws them to do it. I think that's what we talked about here is when the municipality has taken an action to draw people to a place to undertake a recreation activity, which probably helps how we're going to name that.
Thank you, Mr. Given and Ms. Counselor Wilson?
Mayor, would you take a friendly amendment uh, striking tobogganing and uh, adding outdoor recreation facilities?
In principle, yes, facilities still becomes problematic. Um, so I'm thinking of friendly amendment um, to develop policy and administrative procedures regarding recreational use of municipal lands. Maybe we could refine municipal lands. I, I think this such a policy is going to be needed um, if we get to that point where we have the bike skills part, for example. This, we simply, and it, it's not regulating the activity, it's documenting our connection with the activity. And so documenting that it is unsupervised, for example, that we recommend that we use safety equipment, but we don't require it because we could never enforce that, things of that nature. And we apparently we have it already with, with skating. We should have it with tobogganing.
Skate park.
Skate park, all of that kind of stuff. We, we should just set some clear standards. Um, so if it, if it is recreational use of is it unserviced municipal land? It's undeveloped municipal land? Maybe it is developed. I guess that the church um, tobogganing hill has been developed to some extent.
So it's now a facility, now it's a tobogganing facility. So I think the facility is, yeah, and then we can redefine it as we
So recreational use of municipal facilities, outdoor use. I look across. So the motion then, if I can go back after all of that with friendly amendments is that committee receive this report for information and committee direct administration to prepare and present to a future committee behold a draft of policy and administrative procedures regarding recreational use of outdoor municipal facilities.
It would appear that we appear we may be receiving this report for information twice between the two motions, but I think we can live with that.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear it in the first motion if it was there.
Okay. Just for clarification, so we're receiving this for information once. Perfect. Um, further discussion? Looking around the room?
It's good information. We should receive it twice.
We should receive it twice. And um, prior to the vote, Mr. Given, are we good with the subsequent discussion? All right. I'm looking around the room for all those in favor. And that's Carrie. With some hesitance, I move to item seven point four. Mr. Ireland or Mayor Ireland, if I might, uh, this was an item that you added to the agenda. I think it's uh, relevant, of course, to the next federal election.
It is. Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, and I appreciate your reluctance to speak again. However, I, and I, I do apologize for the lateness of this. I had considered it earlier, but then we took hiatus and we fell through cracks. And now we are faced um, potentially with, with a deadline and we won't have another opportunity to discuss this before that deadline comes and passes. It is not necessary that we make a presentation with respect to the proposed redistribution of electoral boundaries. Um, it's not necessarily that we make a submission of any sort. But if we wanted to make a presentation, we have to provide a notice by August fifteenth that we intend to do that. So that would be an in-person presentation or potentially a, a, a virtual presentation. And there are a number of opportunities to that that are listed. So if we wanted to take advantage of that and um, make a presentation, we would have to get that in this file within the next six days. If we are inclined instead simply to make a submission, we have to make a written submission to the commission that is is concerned with this particular question. It seems to me that this is almost a once in a career opportunity um, to have a say on redrawing of electoral boundaries. We will be aware perhaps that I spoke to media in town. I personally am supportive of the initiative, um, but I try not to speak on behalf of council. Councils have no opportunity to work at this and council may have other views. And I am not at this point trying to determine what council's view would be, but rather whether council should take the opportunity to develop a view and express a view. So my, my draft motion that I did circulate was that council, pardon me, committee direct administration to file notice of intent of the municipality of Jasper to present to the Alberta Commission on redistricting at the public hearing. I chose Banff, um, which is on September twenty-third, um, just because I think we might be able to coordinate with Banff and Canmore, um, if they are interested in having some tax discussions with their mayors about that. Um, secondly, um, the motion would be that um, council meet with our C A O in a closed session to develop firstly our acquisition and then our, our presentation. And so I'm not presupposing um, whether we, we would be favorable or opposed or something. And finally, that um, committee direct that I continue to attempt to coordinate um, similar presentations with Banff and Canmore. Again, my personal view is that I think there is real advantage to Jasper in this proposed redistricting, although I would rather see Canmore become part of the whole. My concern is that having reached this stage, it is going ahead anyway. We should take the opportunity to try and influence it as we might be able to potentially include Canmore. I concede that there are others who think that we are better off with two M P's rather than one. Um, and there are practical concerns and appreciate from the M P's perspective. It's already a large um, writing and this changes it um, on a north self-access, which is even more difficult for version particularly at some towns here. But those practical considerations, not standing, um, I think we should take a position. If that position is the presentation we need to decide today, if council prefers just to have a written submission, we have ample time to put that together once we decide. So I will, I will make my motion as has been presented. Um, council is more inclined to a public, uh, pardon me, a, a written submission rather than a, than a public hearing. I can, I can certainly live with that. I will come along on that.
Thank you, worship. Um, any counselor comments? Counselor Wilson?
Well, I appreciate the Mayor Ireland's uh, uh, motion and I, I will support it.
Other counselors? Counselor, uh, Watson?
I too appreciate the uh, work, uh, Mayor Ireland is putting to have and I too support it.
Any other counselors? I was expressed the same way. I am in support of, of making a formal presentation and gathering in a, in a workshop format to, to have a discussion. So we're all clear as to um, council stand on this particular, um, as you say, once in a lifetime potential change in, in the electoral boundaries. Any other comments from counselors? Mayor Ireland?
If I can just speak to close debate with anybody else who's in the group age, I just wanted to be clear that although I sent a draft um, of my motion this morning, I have been encouraged to change one word and you used it. So when I spoke my motion earlier on the record, it was that council meet with our C A O in closed session to develop presentation rather than workshop, which um, might be misconstrued, but I think as a matter of strategic priorities would be to meet in camera. I think we should, but if there's any confusion, I changed the, the closed session rather than workshop.
Thank you, worship. Any other discussion with that div? Well, I let's suppose, I'm sorry, I guess that we are done with discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Move along to the motion action list. Mr. Given?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Um, there are a couple of items administration is recommending moving. Obviously that I want uh, so I can say still can be removed or replaced by any additional work that was directed today. Um, the J C H C governance review, item number three, um, which was coordinated workshop with colleagues, J C H C and council for the review of the report that councilors that received that invitation um, to that virtual meeting. And then there are a couple of items in the Alberta Japan uh, twinning municipal uh, twinning motion. Um, Saiforn has uh, addressed a couple of those that we would update our profile on the website and sending up the flag for future conferences. So those two items out of those five can be taken off the other administrations are working on. Uh, those are the updates that administration had view on the motion action list. We recommend that we approve updating the list with those.
Yeah, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, through you, Mr. Given. I just getting to remind me when the governance review shot this dead hook and said we received notice, but I'm not sure that I paid attention to that.
Thanks, uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick. Uh, yes, uh, we did send out an invitation uh, for August sixteenth. I can just see the list of invitees and it looks like uh, most members of council uh, are, are not attending. Mayor Ireland, for your comfort, it should be in your calendar because you told us.
Thank you. Um, housing gap and I recognize you. Thank you.
And I guess I'm looking for a motion. That the committee approved the updated motion action list. Counselor Hall, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that's Carrie. That will bring us to council, counselor upcoming meetings. Um, any updates from counselors? Counselor Wilson?
With last um, so last Thursday, I attended the uh, commercially used public space task force meeting. Um, went very well. Uh, we uh, ran through um, the first meeting where we thought, uh, where we think that um, value seeding and uh, retail spaces, etc., should, you know, how, how that should be uh, self-edited. So I agree, great uh, great meeting and we were meeting again. Um, oh yeah, uh, most likely next week to eleven.
Thank you very much. Any other council reports? There being none. We move to item ten, upcoming events. Alberta Municipalities Convention and Trade Show, September twenty-one to twenty-three. Um, a number of council uh, members uh, are planning to attend. Uh, we uh, that will be in, in I make a correction there about the Edmonton Convention Center will be in the Calbe Convention Center and um, that would probably could coincide with the presentation in Bath then on the twenty-third on the Friday that uh, we just voted uh, on regarding the redistricting. Sorry, that's not the right term. Uh, the change in the federal election boundaries. There's a real difference between the two. Any other comments from counselors? Counselor Hall?
Um, as far as upcoming events, I'd like to add September ninth through eleven, we are Jasper Folk Music Festival. Probably the first time in a few years.
Thank you for that. Any other events? I will add to the list as well on a little from memory, this is going to be the Saturday of that same weekend, a presentation at the uh, museum by Robert Stanford on our display disappearing glaciers. Uh, so a museum event that uh, uh, I'm sure we'll see more information on shortly. So looking around the room, I am looking for counsel. We appear to be at the end of the agenda. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Thank you, Counselor Wilson. All those in favor? And uh, thank you to the public and media who have been um, monitoring and, and listening in on today's proceedings. We look forward to welcoming you back on Tuesday, sixteenth of August for our regular council meeting.